It's one thirty.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's work session of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners this March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Today, we have two presentations. Our first one will be to receive a summary from our Finance Department regarding the departmental and agency requests for the fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six, biennial budget cycle. Bill Volkman is here. He's our Finance Director and he'll be providing our summary today.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We're going to jump right into our presentation and this is going to be very informal, so at any point, if you have any questions, please stop me along the way. And I will try to pause at the conclusion of each slide just to double check and make sure everybody's still okay. All right, so we're going to start this process. We started this process in September of two thousand and twenty-three. And this Chairwoman's letter always sets the tone for the budget process as we send this out to all our departments and elected officials throughout the county. We've asked departments, or we asked departments to identify savings areas that can be realigned to meet their funding needs for two thousand and twenty-five. Budget requests should be critical and aligned with the county's strategic outcome areas as defined in the strategic plan that was adopted by the Board. We are trying to make sure that all of the information that we share with you is available to the public, so the copy of the letter, as well as the schedule in this presentation, will all be found on the Cobb County Finance website, so the citizens can stay up to date with all the updates from the budget process. But before we jump into some of the requests, we want to kind of break down the budget. I know we focus heavily on the General Fund, but I wanted to just kind of refresh the Board and the citizens what is really included in the budget. Currently, we have eighteen funds. Four of those have millage rates associated with that. So we always talk about the General Fund, floating homestead exemption, but we also have the FIRE Fund, which has its own millage rate, the Cumberland Special Service District, which has its millage rate on commercial properties, and the Six Flags Special Service District, which is also on commercial properties. There are forty-three individual departments that are represented in the budget, and those departments have one hundred and thirteen individual units of activity. And then, once we dive a little bit deeper, there's one hundred and sixty-three individual expense codes and one hundred and fifty-three revenue codes. So to give you the breakdown when we really go through the budget, there are four thousand one hundred and ten individual expense lines that have to be considered. There are only three hundred and thirty-six different revenue lines, so you can see the expense lines far outnumber the number of revenue lines as we go through those. And of the four thousand individual expense lines, two thousand one hundred and eighty-three of those are requesting an increase in two thousand and twenty-five. Any questions on this slide before I move on?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're going to break these down. We start high level and we'll work to more detail as we go through this. We did want to walk through and give you some history from two thousand and twenty to through two thousand and twenty-five requested, and you can see what is before you. So the governmental funds, and we're going to break down what funds make up that list. We were just over, or just under nine hundred million dollars in part of the adopted FY-24, and the requested for two thousand and twenty-five is just over one billion dollars. The business-type funds, which again, we'll break down that, but that's primarily water, transit, golf course, and sustainability and solid waste, or sorry, sustainability and beautification. We were at three hundred and two million in two thousand and twenty-four, and the request is three hundred and twenty-two, twenty-two million in two thousand and twenty-five. One of the items that we added here at the bottom is the full-time positions added over the years, but I want to give you a little bit of history. If y'all remember, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had six hundred and fifty-eight position requests. And if you just subtract from that, what we funded in twenty-three and twenty-four, that would get you down to four hundred and seventy-seven position requests that were asked for in two thousand and twenty-three that have not been funded to date. Now, you will notice the number that is requested for two thousand and twenty-five is below that, is three hundred and eighty-two versus the four hundred and seventy-seven, which was the original list. And why, I just want to call to your attention, I did give you a copy of the presentation and two handouts. One of the handouts is going to have all of the position requests that make up the requests here for the three hundred and eighty-two positions, and the second is a detail of the capital requests throughout the county. Okay. This is a new slide for us this year, and we wanted to show some history here. So we always show what the budgets were adopted at. So you can see in two thousand and twenty, it was just under a billion dollars. This is county-wide. And then, the requested in two thousand and twenty-five is one billion, three hundred and fifty-two million. Now, we went ahead and adjusted these for inflation factors. So we always want to show, you know, what the budget increased, but when you want to really look apples to apples, we pulled this data from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. The two thousand and twenty budget, even though it was adopted at just under one billion dollars, equated to one billion, two hundred and five million. And you see the same number in two thousand and twenty-one, even though there's an increase of about twelve million. And then, we actually had a dip in two thousand and twenty-two, even though the budget went up an additional thirty million. In today's dollars, because of inflation, it was actually equated to less buying power than we had in two thousand and twenty-one. And then, we rebounded a little bit in two thousand and twenty-three. We got closer to the one-point-two-billion-dollar mark again with inflation, and then we had a slight uptick in two thousand and twenty-four to get to one billion, two hundred and ten million. And then, again, obviously, no inflation adjustment for two thousand and twenty-five. The request is one billion, three hundred and fifty-two million. So this just shows you kind of what they would have looked like in purchasing power for today's dollars. Okay. And then, before we jump into all the requests, I do want to share with you some of the requests that are not going to be included in this presentation but are currently being discussed. The reason they're not included is they were not entered into Open Gov on December fifteenth, and some of these numbers are still being evaluated with options to be considered that will come back before the Board, before the final budget adoption. But with those, starting at the top, we have any proposed change to Public Safety Step and Grade Plan. I noted that has been a discussion topic as we've looked for options of how we can address some of our vacancy issues within public safety. A county-wide cost of living adjustment, and as you know, we do class and pay studies every three to five years, and that usually comes with a very significant price tag. And as a recommendation from HR, is if we do COLAs throughout the year to adjust pay scales, you stay more current, which reduces the amount that you have at that three-to-five-year window. Keeps your workforce salaries a little bit more current with the market, and again, reduces that price tag every three to five years. And then, another item that has been up for discussion for the past several years is looking at the county's match for their defined contribution plan. That's the hybrid plan. Currently, today, as an employee, you can contribute up to four percent. The county will match the dollar, percent to percent to, for additional four, to give you eight. So there's been some conversations then around that of how we can look at improving that in the future. And then, one of the other items is, we are at the end of our ten-year agreement on service delivery, so any adjustments to that agreement, positive or negative, have not been included in the budget to date. So that is flattened, that budget amount remains in there as it was at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions on this slide? Yes, Commissioner?
Bill, on this county-wide cost of living adjustment, is that for the merit increases?
No, ma'am. So what the discussion has been around is this would be a merit increase, but then we'd also be looking at adjusting like at one percent or whatever that percentage is. That's part of the reason it's not included in the request, that hasn't been detailed out. But let's say for hypothetical, we did a, you know, three percent merit, there would be a one percent COLA that would be county-wide to keep the salaries in line with the market and try to reduce that class and pay study every three to five years. So instead of a, you know, twenty-million-dollar price tag at the end of that three to five years, hopefully, it's something significantly less because we've taken little bites out of that apple each year versus, again, once every three to five years. So that is-
So that would be across the board, the cost of living?
It would be. So again, it's not in the request, but it is part of the discussions, but I do want to bring that to your attention in case that does come up in the future. You do know that it's not included in the numbers I'm going to share with you today.
So it isn't separated as to a cost?
It is not yet, because that hasn't been fully flushed out, just like the step and grade changes. There's a lot of options being considered, and I think they want to share those options with you as the Board and seek direction of which option would you like to consider, if any? So that way, you can have that information. And then, once we know that option, they would share the cost of that, and it could be included in budget adoption discussions when we get later into the spring, early summer. Okay? Very good. Okay, and I apologize, this slide has a lot of numbers on it, but I promise I will not go through each one of these. We're going to hit some of the highlights here. I'm going to start at the top line here, the General Fund. This is where, again, we focus most of our attention. You will see that it's a hundred and twenty-seven-point-one-million-dollar increase is being requested over the adopted two thousand and twenty-four. And you can see at the bottom of this, this is the total of the governmental funds. The total is a hundred and thirty-two. So the General Fund is the lion's share of this request. And as we walk down, I do want to hit a couple of these highlights, and we will break this out in a little bit more detail as we get further. FIRE is one-point-eight million, and the Hotel Motel Fund is two-point-five. But I do want to bring your attention to that. That is a revenue-driven request. It is not an expense-driven request. That is simply to adjust the budget to be more in line with the collections we've received. As we've recovered from the pandemic, the hotel motel taxes have continued to grow. And then, a quick reminder on that, the Galleria Authority receives sixty-two-and-a-half percent of those revenues. The county receives thirty-seven-and-a-half percent of those revenues, which we use to pay towards the stadium bond debt service. So again, as that group number grows, that just gives us additional resources to put towards that obligation. Okay. And then, as we walk through some of these other ones, I do want to point out, nine-one-one is about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar increase. They, as you know, have a defined revenue source, which has a cap on it, so it will be adjusted to meet with, meet those restrictions. And then, also, the other one I want to just call to your attention is the Streetlight District Fund. Again, also revenue-driven, so the expenses will be adjusted to fit within that scope of those revenues. Any questions on the governmental? And I do promise we will touch General Fund, FIRE Fund, and nine-one-one in more detail in a little bit. Yes, ma'am? Yes, Commissioner? No, absolutely.
The E-nine-one-one fund, isn't that fully funded with the dollar-fifty cellphone fee?
That is absolutely correct. So that's when I say if their request is an increase of six hundred K, it still has to fit within that dollar-fifty revenue stream that they are, that they generate. So we will evaluate that as we get closer, and with the Board's approval, we would, we would accept that request at the six hundred K, as long as it fit within that revenue stream. But again, that would be up to the Board to make that decision, but we do not have any outside funds, General Fund or otherwise, that would go to support that.
Right. Okay.
Good question. Okay. All right. So we're going to jump into our business-type funds. And as we stated, we have the Water Fund, the Transit Fund, the Golf Course Fund, the Sustainability Waste and Beautification Fund, and the total of these four funds is a request of twenty-point-six million. As I walk through these, I do want to touch on the Water Fund, is a request of eight-point-eight million, and that is primarily due to the increase in operational costs related to water purchases, professional service fees, sludge handling, equipment supplies, and chemicals. And the ones I named account for seven-point-one million of that eight-point-eight million. So the lion's share of that is simply to continue the operations as they exist today, and just as escalating costs have continued to rise in those areas. Okay, and then I'm going to move down to Transit. This is primarily related to a new contract for operator service fees, so it is requesting a seven-point-two-million-dollar increase, and it's all related to the operations. Operator service fees and fuel and so on. So again, no personnel, no, no anything there, simply operations for the existing system that you have in place today. The Golf Course Fund, this is also revenue-driven. Hopefully, we continue to have weather and revenues continue to come in strong, but for the last several years, this, this fund has really performed. It really hit its peak during COVID. I guess everybody really wanted to be outside enjoying some separation, but those trends have continued as we've recovered from COVID. This course does extremely well. It pays for itself. No General Fund dollars are going to fund this course, so all the revenues that are generated there stay within the course, and actually, some have been able to be transferred back for a loan that the General Fund gave several years ago. So they've been able to continue to make progress on paying that back with the revenues they've generated, and they've also been able to keep the course up to date with any capital maintenance that has been required. Yes, Commissioner?
What is the, what was the loan amount for the golf course?
I'll go back and look. I think we're around two million dollars remaining, give or take, but I'll give you the exact amount, and I'll even see what the original amount was. So the reason, the reason there was a loan originally is there was bonds outstanding for the construction of the course, and the General Fund used to have to make up any shortfalls during that time to pay that in service. No additional dollars have been given on that loan since those bonds have been paid off for several years, so the course has been able to pay back and reduce that bond, there, sorry, reduce that loan.
The loan, yeah. And so, is it something at regular intervals, or is it kind of when they exceed their revenues? There's a-
We evaluate it every year at the close of the cycle, so basically, as a golf course would typically be driven, at the end of the fall is kind of where their peak cash position is, and then, end of winter is their low point. So we usually look at about that end of the winter, and then we send money back based on that cash position. So we always like to make sure they have cash reserves in place to cover any downturn based on weather, but we do make sure that any additional dollars will come back to the General Fund to repay that, and we do want to continue to make progress in reducing that over a period of time.
Because I can imagine the preferences, as long as they can take care of their things, we're okay to kind of sit, but-
No, we, that is, even if we can only pay a little bit, we pay a little bit.
Right.
But we always want to make sure they have the cash reserve, and it's basically an operating reserve.
The worst case would be that they have some type of commitment, and then we have to go back and reallocate against it or something. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, the biggest factor with this is really comes down to weather. So that's what drives it, but most of their operating costs are pretty flat. We have an operating contract for an outside company who manages the course, so our costs are pretty easy to plan for. The revenue is the only thing that fluctuates. Okay, jumping down to sustainability, waste, and beautification, this is a little bit of a change. As we walk through this, we knew, we have the new Office of Sustainability, so there is a little bit of an ask there. There are some positions, four positions being requested for this new office. There's an additional one-point-eight million of capital requests coming between solid waste and sustainability. And then, we do have a big request this year for some landfill post-closure costs, about one-point-six million. And those do happen every so often as we have landfills that are closed. We do, we are required to maintain those. So as there are issues that may come up, there may need to be additional dollars invested in those to keep those up to code and, or up, up in compliance to, to, to make sure we don't, we're not admitting anything that we shouldn't be admitting. So I worked with Jonathan's Office and Kimberly White's Office to make sure we captured all those, and we'll give you the detailed breakdown of those anytime you'd like to see them. But those are the primary drivers, like I said, for positions, some capital for aging equipment, and some capital for the positions, and then again, post-closure costs of one-point-six million. Okay. All right, so all in, we're looking at a total request county-wide of one million fifty-two, sorry, one hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and fifty-two-point-nine million is what we're asking for county-wide, or was being requested. And again, we've already touched on the items that are not included in those numbers. So we're going to jump into the detailed version of this, just the General Fund breakdown. We tried to break this out in a little different ways so you could see this. Personnel is a big part of this as we'll walk through this. This is, there are three hundred and seventy-three positions of the three hundred and eighty-plus are General Fund positions, and that equates to fifty-three-point-eight million. And then, we have the top three departments broken down their position requests, and I know these are subject to change. I believe the Sheriff has already met and reduced his original request down, so we'll continue to work with all the departments as these are revised, but this is what was entered into Open Gov as December fifteenth. And then, also, the top three departments with the largest requested increases, you have Sheriff at thirty-five million, Police at twenty-one million, Probate Court at eight-point-two million, but I do want to bring to your attention on their eight-point-two-million dollars, seven million of that is for capital renovation of their space. So that gives you an idea of how, because that is kind of an anomaly number for Probate Court, that's a pretty big request, but seven million of that is for capital renovations. Okay. Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Those capital renovations, I'm assuming that's like the furniture, the carpeting, some of the walls and-
It is more of a complete renovation of the existing space. It's not fixture, it is, has some fixtures, but it is the renovation and configuration of space.
Right.
Very similar to what we did with the-
So the rain isn't falling on?
Yes, yes, very similar to the Sheriff's Office, old building. It's going to, it's got a pretty good price tag.
Understood.
So, and that is an early estimate, working with Judge Walk and Property Management, so we will continue to refine that, but we went ahead and put it as a placeholder so you're aware.
Okay, I was just making sure it was the same or not a different endeavor, but, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
But just to tag on to Commissioner Richardson's question, if probate's portion is only seven million dollars and the whole building needs to be renovated, why aren't we looking at renovating the entire building?
I think there's-
Because that was one of the arguments for the Sheriff's Building, is we couldn't do it piecemeal. Why can we do it piecemeal here?
I believe there is a greater conversation taking place. They wanted to make sure that they didn't get, didn't get overlooked in the budget request. So this was actually not part of the original December fifteenth Open Gov request, but is a conversation we've had since then. So it was to a large enough scale while we wanted to bring it to your attention that it is out there and it is being discussed. So if there is a, if there is a revision to that, we will make sure to share that. Whether that number decreases or increases as we look at the entire building, we'll share both of those numbers with you as we work with Property Management and their team. Okay, very good. Yes, Commissioner?
I know it's early, but do you have a guesstimate of what that price tag might be?
I do not. I just got the seven-million-dollar number, and I don't even have it in the Open Gov system, but I want to make sure I include it in this presentation. So we'll work with Sharon and her team to make sure that what, that has kept up to speed. We were even questioned whether we wanted to share that because it is a very preliminary number, so we just wanted to put it out there and just put a caveat next to it so you know, hey, it could be a pretty good price tag, so I didn't want it to be overlooked and that way you weren't aware. You're welcome. But we will promise to keep you up to date as we have those discussions. Yes, Commissioner?
And that is separate from the State Court need, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this slide? I do want to hit a couple of things, just so we have some information. I know one of the hot topics have been on the transfers out. This funds a lot of our transfer, this is a big part of that is our transit subsidy, but then this also funds several capital projects and information service projects that are conducted in multi-year funds, so that's why you have that increase as we kind of walk through some of those. Okay, and then, again, I gave you the capital handout that ties to the forty-two-point, forty-three-point-two million. It's a twenty-five-million-dollar increase over last year. Now, I want to be clear in what includes, included in the last year's number. You see eighteen-point-two million. That is basically two things. It's the twelve million that you allocated out to all the departments, and roughly six million and change for vehicle replacement. That's essentially what's that, that's the eighteen million. So the forty-three million would include, again, the continuation of the vehicle replacement, and you have twelve million dollars to allocate towards that delta, is what we currently have as a placeholder. Okay. Okay. Yes, sorry.
It's okay, I was waiting to be called on. So going back to the capital, because we've known that we've had over fifty-million dollars of requests roughly sitting out there for-
Yes.
Years. So I know this goes to forty-three, but does this include some of those requests that have been sitting out there unfunded for years, or are these new requests?
It is a little bit of both. It is primarily the requests that have continued to sit out there that we have not been able to fund, they continue to roll. There are some new requests that come online based on pressing needs and conversations with the department heads. So they do work through the list, and they do provide it to us, and we share it with y'all. Now, this number was significantly higher, but obviously, we did, we had a, the Sheriff's renovation, which took nineteen million dollars off this list. So that was one of the items as we were kind of walking through this, we kind of had the presentation ready to go, waiting to see how that agenda item happened. And we've also had a couple other agenda items that have come forward, I believe from Slistner, Slistner and Juvenile Court, that helped reduce this. They've, you've given them one-time monies to address some one-time needs, and they were able to reduce their twenty-five requests, and it said so in the agenda item. Basically, we'll do this with the understanding that our twenty-five requests would be reduced. So we do continue to look at this. This was actually, when we, like I said, when we first looked at it, it was nineteen million and change higher. So it is more in line with the fifty million that we've kind of been throwing around for the last several years. We take little bites out of it, twelve million at a time here and there, but a big part of that, again, vehicle replacement is six million dollars a year. That is one of those requests that, if it's six million, how far, how many vehicles does six million get you this year versus last year? So it's, it's, right, that's one of those challenges, is that by leaving that twelve million flat or the six million flat, you have less buying power today than you did last year. Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is a new slide, and this is a little bit of an anomaly. So one of the things we talked about in several, several of our work sessions about impact items, and we've talked about it at the Board of Commissioners Retreat, on the, on the columns on, or the table on the left, you'll see seventeen-point-six million dollars, and you'll notice the very two items at the bottom of those, those are actually on the agenda for tonight. These are all impact items that the Board has approved that will have an impact on us for two thousand and twenty-five. So that's seventeen-point-six million dollars that have to be covered with revenue that will come in in two thousand and twenty-five. So go ahead, Commissioner.
Minus one million?
My-
Minus one million?
Minus one million.
Tyler, the tech tax system?
Yep.
It will, we, it's pending, yeah.
Yeah, it is pending. So that, that one's pending for tonight, but I did want to make sure it was called to your attention that we, that, I believe that is a separate system. This is through, this is the IS agenda item tonight, which is now, hasn't been polled? Okay.
Okay.
So, thank you for the clarification, because we did have it on there as of, and I remember Kimberly said Monday, which was, I guess, yesterday, that it could be polled. So we did have it on as pending, so just to kind of give you an idea, but these do add up quickly. So one of the things we've talked about is please look at your impact items on the agendas, because any one of these individually does not look that daunting, but when you put them all together, they, they add up quickly. And one of the anomalies that we had last year is, you can see in August, we had the transit agreement. Again, same service that you're providing today had an eight-million-dollar increase in cost. So a lot of our contracts are like that, is we have them for years, they may have a small escalator, but when we go out to bid, they're going to come in higher than they did last time. So that is something to keep in mind, is even if we're providing the same service, the cost will be more. Okay, so we, and one of the things the Chair has asked us to do is to make sure you all get this list before every board meeting going forward, so that there will be a running total of this, and you can see it. So that way, to your point, if you had one for the twenty-six, you'll see as a pending, and then you can say, like Commissioner Richardson did, hey, this has been polled, I can cross this off my list. So that just kind of gives you an idea, but one of the things we want to talk about is when this happens, again, that's seventeen-point-six million dollars that has to be covered by revenue growth in two thousand and twenty-five. And on a given year, you're somewhere in that thirty-million-dollar ballpark, so that eats up over half. Now, jumping to the column on the right, these are, I won't call these budget recommendations, but they're somewhere in between must-haves and budget recommendations. So these are to adjust for things that have to be done or that are currently being done and insufficiently budgeted for. And these don't all have to be included, however, they all warrant a conversation to see, do we need to make a change to change these numbers? If we say, no, we're going to leave status quo in, then the recommendation would be you need to include these numbers to fund what you're paying for today. If we want to make a decision to not do something or to change the way we do something, then these numbers can be adjusted. So this is just to let you know, these are all worthy of a conversation, to say, if we don't do anything, we just want to operate as we are today, these should be included in your budget as we move forward. Now, I'm going to touch on one of these, overtime for police and sheriff. Okay, we've made a lot of adjustments over the last several years for step and grade and made adjustments through those. So we also have to keep pace with that as it relates to overtime. As you pay a person more, they will earn more in overtime automatically, even if they're working the same number of hours that they worked previously. Now, the other side of that coin is we know we have some challenges and vacancies within public safety. More vacancies you have, the higher overtime you have. So those are some of the trade-offs we have to have conversations about. So that's just one as an example. Now, we, I would say, anything that has an elected official next to it, and I see probate on here, I would strongly encourage to have the conversation with that elected official as to why exactly. Now, I know those are some small numbers and maybe we're just okay with those, but just so you have a better understanding, we can provide you the justification of why they're on this list. And then the very bottom one, you'll see, basically from three eighty, these are existing projects that we have in place, cybersecurity, PC replacements, GIS, all have escalators. So these also have to continue to be funded. So these are things, again, we have in place today. These are not new services. As we move forward, these are escalators in existing contracts. So if we don't, say, the column on the left, if, hey, these are agenda items you approved that have an impact, some of these are multi-year contracts that have increases each year. So just because it wasn't approved the last year, doesn't mean there wasn't, won't be an increase for the next three years. You could, it just could have step-ups as we go. Okay. So, again, if you add these two columns together, twenty-seven point four, twenty-seven point four million. We threw out the thirty million dollar number as a, just a swag placeholder for average revenue increase. It could be more, it could be less. That kind of gives you some expectations of where you stand before we consider the additional requests as we move forward. So again, the column on the right, worthy of a conversation of what do we want to include? What do we want to change? Yes, Commissioner?
Question, is there a difference in the quantity between the Sheriff's actson and police actson, or is that more about the contract escalation?
More about the contract.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this slide? Okay. All right. Jumping into fire. So three positions requested. Revenue projections that we have currently are going to be based on the current millage rate. Again, up for discussion as we move forward, but we had to have a starting point to say what that would look like. It's a one point eight million dollar request. Most of it's in operations and we'll continue to work through those. But to kind of give you an idea of what's driving that, personal protective equipment, medical and dental services, annual maintenance contracts, building, ground and repairs and maintenance. That's primarily what's driving that increase. So just kind of keep that in mind. And again, personnel, even though we have three positions requested, you have the full year impact of the step and grade that would impact fire more so than the general fund, because fire, primarily most of their employees are on step and grade, where general fund, only some of the employees are on step and grade. But they would have the merit impact as well. So just kind of walk through that. Very small change in the, as, as we walk through fire and they are doing well. Now, one of the things we did talk about is fire, we talked about this at the retreat, fire had a good year last year. We still go negative in cash every year. So this is something we need to continue to plan for and hopefully continue to make improvements as we go forward. Any questions on the fire fund?
Isn't that more of a timing issue?
It is a timing issue. So fire fund basically has one source of revenue. It's property taxes. You collect it in the fall, you spend it down, it goes negative in March, and then you basically replenish at the beginning of the next fall. So the longer you can extend that out, the more of cash they will actually have. So basically, they have to borrow from the general fund or other fund equivalents to sustain them. Now, they always come out at the end of the year as a net positive. So they do get through that and they have done it, they improved in that area. However, they, like I said, they still go negative, but we do not have to borrow with TANs anymore, because the other funds are continuing to help offset some of that temporary cash reduction. That is the danger of having one revenue source. Because if that revenue source only comes in one time a year, you don't have any revenue for most of, most of the year. It, there's just nothing coming in. There's a few permits, a few inspections, but that doesn't pay for the fire, which is primarily personnel and operating. So that is the danger of having that. That's why the general fund is unique. About sixty percent of the general fund's revenue is from taxes. So fire, it's more than ninety-five percent is from taxes. Okay. Any questions? Good. Okay. All right. We touched on this already, but just a quick breakdown of nine-one-one fund. Again, as Commissioner Burrows said, it is based on the dollar fifty rate and everything kind of has to live within that rate. So as we consider these requests, the budget always recommends we accept the request as long as it fits in the rate. But again, that is ultimately the Board's decision. So we'll continue to tweak the numbers and adjust for revenues based on how they're currently coming in and give you a final revenue number and see if it can cover the existing request. But it is a pretty small increase as, as we move forward. Okay. All right. So now we're going to kind of get into kind of next steps. So for April, we are going to reach out to the Board and discuss any of their requests that are not already included in the request presented by the departments or get your feedback on some of the other requests that are currently being discussed, but maybe not included to date. We're going to ask the departments to, we're basically going to unlock open gov and departments will have access to those where they can make adjustments based on Commissioner and County Manager feedback of their requests. And we'll kind of begin to shape what the budget presentation will look like at the end of June, as we kind of have, continue to have those conversations. So we will be reaching out to try to schedule time with you both in April and May, if possible, to have a couple of sit downs and kind of see where everybody is, see what other items that maybe departments have requested that are a high priority for you that you'd like to see considered, anything that may have been missed from departmental requests that you would like to have considered. And then also share your feedback with the other board members, so we can start to build what we believe is a budget that would hopefully pass this, this July. So we want to make sure, whatever we present at June, we're pretty close. We feel like there's some support for this and that we know what we're doing as far as the next steps. There may be a few small tweaks between June and the end of July. That usually happens and that's okay. But we'd like to be, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent there when we present in June, to kind of give you an idea. And then one of the items I know that has come up in the past is we will discuss, I know it was a big topic last year about what a rollback would look like. Part of the challenge with the rollback, just to remind the Board, is as we do that, you also have the seventeen or twenty-seven million dollars of items you've already included. So you still have to cover those. So if, if that is a discussion, we have to walk through what the pros and cons of that will be, because you do have basically things you've already added to twenty-five that have to be covered. So just kind of keep that in mind. And those would definitely be part of the conversations, budgetary, budget and millage, because they are very tied together in April and May. Chairwoman?
Yes, and I appreciate you referring back to that list of seventeen million that we have already obligated ourselves to. It's the other column that gives me a little bit of pause.
Understood.
Something that's not brought to our attention on an ongoing basis is all of the overtime that's occurring in the organization. And that is not insignificant. And there's got to be some way that we put some type of policy together. So we just don't see that number continue to balloon into something that we will obligate ourselves to have to cover, even if we have to make some very serious policy considerations around hiring versus, versus funding overtime.
Understood. And to your point, Chairwoman, that's exactly what that column is supposed to do, is drive conversation to say, what, what do we need to do on some of these or what decisions do we need to make? And I know the County Manager will be happy and along with the budget staff to meet with you and discuss where, where we go. And I'm sure, I know Dr. McMorris has already had some of those conversations. So I think those wheels are turning in a variety of different areas. So I don't know if Dr. McMorris would like to add anything or if you're good. You're good. Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner? Oh, sorry. Chairwoman, were you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Is that reflective of the shortage of-
There's two, yes, there's-
Police and sheriff deputies?
There's definitely two parts of this. So again, one of the areas that we've looked at is we've made salary adjustments for public safety as well as we have throughout the county. The big important part with that is as we make those adjustments, we also need to keep in mind the impact that that would have on overtime. Because even if you're working the same hours, it is now going to cost more because you make more. And that's okay. We just need to make sure that we do that periodically. And a lot of times, that is an area that is kind of put to the wayside, because it is very, I will say, very fluid. It can, it can fluctuate dramatically based on vacancies. So the vacancies is definitely the other part of that. You see overtime in police and fire, because we know those are two areas that we are struggling with right now to fill positions. So there is, there is, there's a couple of aspects that feed into that. Vacancies definitely being one of those. Okay. Okay. Good. All right. All right. Next steps. Okay. So as we kind of walk through these, again, we're going to be meeting with the Board to talk about their different priorities as we go through these. We're going to continue to update the Board with revenue projections as we go through this. A big part of what we're missing from this today is because merit, step and compression were done at the end of March. We're waiting to April one to take that first personnel snapshot, which will be reflective of any new salary adjustments where it happened in March. That will update these numbers as we continue to go forward, because departments can't request, hey, I think it's going to go up this. We'll take a true personnel snapshot, which will account for any vacancy changes. And then also, as we get closer to the spring, we'll be working with HR to get final healthcare and pension numbers, which will also have an impact as we go through though. We try to make a good estimate as we start the year, but we will refine those throughout the process. And then tomorrow, I know Steve White is going to have his digest update. So we're going to have some numbers to work with there and see if they're in line with our projections and can, can continue to refine those as we get closer to that final digest. And then obviously, that will drive a lot of the millage conversations based on priorities in which we choose to, or wish to fund and based on the projections that Steve White has. I think we've nailed down all the other revenues pretty good. We may tweak a few of them between now and then, but for the most part, I think they're in pretty good shape. The digest will be the big one that we'll have to kind of watch and see where that goes. Okay. So again, we're going to have requests, we're going to have revisions, and then eventually shoot for the final at the end of July, which we'll bring to the Board for consideration. Now, with that being said, we have some key dates for you, and I know we shared this at the retreat, but I wanted to have it. And everything we do and everything we do going forward will have these. That way, the citizens are also informed of what we're going to be doing. The Board did make a decision at the retreat. We will be having three public hearings on the budget. So we will be presenting the budget on June 25th. And then June 27th, we will have the budget, budget will advertise, and the millage will advertise at the MDJ. And then we'll have our first public hearing on July 9th, our second public hearing on July 16th, and our third and final public hearing on July 23rd. And that will be the night we'll be asking for, asking the Board to consider, or for adoption of both the millage and the budget. So with that, does the Board have any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you, Bill, for your presentation.
You're welcome. And let me know if you have any questions on the, the handouts. And again, we'll be reaching out to schedule meetings with each and every one of you. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Next up on our agenda, we will have a presentation by our Director of our water system to receive information regarding the stormwater utility fee.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. All right. So I'm here to give an update on stormwater. So I'd like to start with a little bit of a background about what we've been doing. When I was selected as Director in 2020, I was asked by several Commissioners about our stormwater services and what we were doing for citizens and the constant concerns that they were getting from citizens that we're not doing enough about stormwater. So I actually started working on, looking at how our services compare to other local governments and funding, funding sources. Then on December the 14th, 2021, the BOC had a meeting, and at that meeting, the Board expressed support for us continuing to develop a proposal for enhanced stormwater management program and for developing a proposal to establish a separate stormwater utility fee to fund the program. Then on December 13th, 2022, there was a BOC work session where the water system presented a comparison of our stormwater services to other utilities and local governments and information about what a fee based on impervious surface looks like. Then in the fall of 2023, I attended the Chairwoman's Town Hall meetings and talked about stormwater and what we were doing to look at a fee based on impervious surface. And then finally, November 28th, 2023, I did a work session where I presented a proposal for stormwater utility fee based on impervious surface, options for fee amounts to fund additional services. And I presented information on code amendments that would be required to implement a fee based on impervious surface. So some of what I present today is going to be kind of a repeat of our, of what I presented on the 28th, but I'm not going to go through everything that I presented on the 28th. So currently, we fund stormwater services. Our system has two rates. We have rates for our customers who live in a city limit and we don't provide stormwater services to, and a higher rate for our customers in unincorporated Cobb, who we do provide stormwater services to. And that is, that is written on the back of our bill. So kind of the issue with charging for stormwater based on water and sewer fees is that the more water you use, the more you pay. So the same size house, if one house uses more water than the other, the one that uses more water is paying more for water and sewer. And then customers on septic, who don't pay sewer fees to us, they are paying less for stormwater services. So this chart just kind of gives an example based on the amount of water that a customer uses, both residential and commercial, of what they're paying today for stormwater services. Another issue with charging for stormwater on our water and sewer bills is that there are approximately 6,700 properties in unincorporated Cobb that have impervious surface and are not paying for stormwater fees because they aren't our customers. They receive their water from a different utility. So why is a change in stormwater fee structure being considered? First of all, based on our current fee structure, we cannot determine exactly how much stormwater we bring in, revenue we bring in each year. So our residential billing is in tiers, and the higher tier, the more a customer pays for stormwater. So our billing system, it tells us how much we bill for residential stormwater, but doesn't break it out into tiers. So we know the consumption, but we don't know the consumption by tier. And then the other thing that we have is if a customer has a leak and they apply for a leak credit, we just put the amount in the system, the amount, so it's a deduct dollar amount, but they consumed the water. So we don't reduce the water consumption. So we don't really have a way to determine how much of that deduct was a deduct of stormwater fees. So while I can't tell exactly what that is, I have estimated that it's, what we're bringing in currently is somewhere between six to eight million dollars a year. Another issue is that single-family residential properties are paying more than their proportionate share of the stormwater costs. Also, water is not the best measure of a property's impact on our stormwater system. And the proposed structure ensures that the stormwater revenue is not used for water and sewer projects and water and sewer revenue is not used for stormwater projects. And that's important for our customers in city limits who do not receive stormwater services from us. So a fee based on impervious surface, I covered this before, but I think it's important to just give an overview again. There's more than sixty stormwater utilities in Georgia currently that charge a fee based on impervious surface, and that includes Acworth, Ostel, Powder Springs and Smyrna. A fee based on impervious creates a funding for stormwater management program. It's a dedicated fund to just be used for stormwater. It can be charged as a monthly fee on a water bill, or it can be charged as an annual fee on a property tax bill, but we are proposing that it be charged on the water bill. And then I know there's been a lot of discussion of whether it is a fee or a tax. And when stormwater utility fees were first initiated late 1999, early 2000, there was a case taken to court, and the Georgia Supreme Court ruled in McLeod versus Columbia County that if it's based on impervious, it is a fee, not a tax. And then the fee is charged to all properties, residential, commercial, schools, churches, government, that have impervious surface. If it's an undeveloped property, it wouldn't be charged. We're only charging properties that have more than 500 square feet of impervious surface. So there are a couple of ways to charge a fee based on impervious. One is residential properties be charged all one flat fee, no matter how much they have. And then another way to do it is a tiered residential structure where residential properties with less pay a little bit less and residential properties with more impervious surface pay a little bit more. And then non-residential properties are charged on the actual square footage. So their charge is based on a calculation. And impervious surface is determined using aerial photography. So I've provided just a snapshot of what that looks like, where the, the blue highlighted area is what's been determined as the impervious surface for this particular property. So as presented in November, we have looked at what the cost would be to implement a stormwater utility fee just to cover our existing budget for operating and our construction projects. And if we wanted to set the fee just to cover that, it would be $2.17 a month for our typical residential customer. But because we do have lots of requests from citizens to improve services and we are not keeping up with our infrastructure, we looked at, at nine options of additional services or additional funding that could be included as part of this fee if we wanted to set the fee to include it. And I went through these in a lot of detail in November, so I'm just going to summarize them today. So option one is additional positions and equipment. That would include crews for us to do stormwater repairs in-house. We currently have no more, no stormwater repair crews. Option two is additional funding for contracted pipe repairs. Option three would be a new service and it would be to fund open channel maintenance immediately downstream of a county pipe and provide limited riprap for private, for residential properties if they needed to place it to address an erosion problem on their property. Option four is to increase our lake storage- our lake storage volume purchase price, which that that is something that we will pay to a private dam owner if they will lower the permanent pool level in their lake, and they can use that money to to repair the dam or or the lake. And we started doing that about 20 years ago and have not increased the price. Option five is to conduct stormwater development inspections within the water system. We currently do all the development inspections for water and sewer, but we don't do the inspections for stormwater. Option six is additional funding for us to maintain Cobb County Water System owned detention ponds. Option seven is funding for future regional projects. Option eight is proactive pipelining, so line stormwater pipes before they fail. We do some lining now, but if we could get out there and do more, there would be a lot more that we could we could get to before they failed. And then option nine is to fund a portion of stormwater pipe repairs in the right of way. The water system currently does not repair stormwater pipes in the right of way. Those are done by DOT, and DOT is also facing a challenge of funding for their pipe repairs. So we had that in there. So all nine options would total up to $5 a month for the typical property. So why do we need these this additional funding? Primarily to catch up on pipe repairs and detention pond repairs. So historically, we funded detention pond repairs and pipe repairs at $3 million a year. FY '23, our budget was $3 million, but luckily, we've got some of the county ARPA reimbursement to use for stormwater pipe repairs. And so we were able to, we spent about 4.9 million. And so our budget for '24, knowing that we still had some ARPA money coming, we set the budget at 4 million, and we're on track to spend that. So the challenge we have with stormwater pipe repairs is we repair pipes, and every time we repair one, we get another call that there's an issue. And so we're very reactive. But having this additional million dollars for the past two years has helped us make a dent in in getting these these done. So in FY '23, we had a backlog of 118 pipe repair projects. We completed 29. We added 18, so we ended the year at 97. So this year, we've started at 97, and currently, we have it down to 88. So expect to complete continue to bring that down. But that's just an example to show that the million dollars is making a difference. And so to add a million dollars to our budget going forward would really help us get through getting that that backlog down down. And then I have just a picture of a of a sinkhole on a property and what it looked like when we dug it up, and then what it looked like when we put the new pipe in. The other issue we have is we are very reactive, and we need to switch from being proactive. Again, I mentioned it would be good if we could get to lining pipes before they fail because most of the time, people somebody's calling us, have a sinkhole in my property, what's going on? We go out there, we put it on the list, we get to it when we can. The other issue that we have where we're being reactive instead of proactive is our detention ponds. So the detention ponds that that we maintain, we currently do not have enough funding in our operating budget to mow all of those every year. So this picture shows one that was overgrown, and that's typically what happens. They get overgrown, and then somebody calls and makes a complaint, and then we go out there and we clear it. But we don't have the funds to keep it mowed and to keep it down. So it's going to grow back over time. And so we would like additional funding for the detention pond maintenance so that we can keep these ponds mowed and keep them operating the way that they should be operating. And then the other thing to be proactive, we'd really like for us to look at some more regional solutions for stormwater. So we did a regional detention pond Chastain Meadows on Noonday Creek several quite a few years ago, and we haven't done any regional projects since then. I know the state has changed the type of projects that they will approve, but I think that we need to be looking at more regional solutions throughout the county. But we don't have the funding currently to do that. So it would be good if we could bring in some funding and start saving for some projects and then start looking at where we might be able to do some type of regional project. And then finally, we continue to get a lot of pressure from the public to provide additional services, to provide open channel maintenance, to maintain all pipes on private property. There we maintain the majority of the pipes on private property, but ones that were installed after the subdivision was planted, we don't maintain, and we're getting a lot of pressure from the public to maintain those as well. The the funding that we have now currently does not provide money to maintain any additional private pipes. I feel like we need to get caught up on our backlog before we could consider expanding those type of services.
You have a question, Judy?
Thank you. And for the private pipes, part of the issue there is also the gratuities clause, right?
Excuse me?
The gratuities clause, that's also part of that issue with being able to.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
For those listening or watching who does not know what that is, or who do not know what that is, can you explain what the gratuities clause is?
Yes. So the gratuities clause is county government has to be very careful about how we spend our money, and we cannot spend our money to benefit a specific property owner that is something that just is just for them that services that we don't provide other people.
Okay. So we can't really use the public resources for private?
Right. We can't use, right. Public for private is is an issue.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just to add on, because I know there's a lot of, there's also a lot of conversation, especially whenever we have our flash floods, around what exactly is private property if everyone's kind of carrying their burden and what the definition of public, what's the word, the public use or something, how do you actually define that? And right now, gratuities clause is pretty limited. It's defined as whose property is it? And so I do know that there is interest in the public seeing that be a more shared responsibility than all concentrated on a single property owner. We're just not there yet as a state, though.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. And then I just wanted to cover, I know there's a lot of discussion about the transfer to the general fund, so I just wanted to give a little bit of background on that. The transfer from the water system, water and sewer revenue, the general fund began in 1998 at 5%. By 2003, it was up to 10%. From 2012 to 2016, it was reduced down to 6%. And then in 2017, it was raised back up to 10%. And then the last four years, it has been reduced 1% every year. So now we're down to a 6% transfer. So for FY '24, it's 6%. The transfer is $15 million. But less than $500,000 of that transfer is from stormwater revenue. So if we reduce that transfer, it would help stormwater by about half a million dollars a year. It would not be appropriate, in my opinion, to use the full $15 million for stormwater, because then we would be taking revenue from our city customers, some of it, not the full 15, but some of the revenue from our city customers that don't receive stormwater services would then be going towards stormwater.
Thank you for clarifying that. I know that's given a lot of residents heartburn, and it's been something that I've been grappling with as I've been responding to emails, is that transfer. You provided a little bit of history, and I think it's important to share the history behind that transfer, why it was put in in place, because people just see money going from one natural resource to support a much broader use. That makes it very difficult to understand, particularly in light of us putting in this new program. So I see Bill standing up. If you can help enlighten us a little bit about that, Judy.
Sure.
Okay. So Chairwoman, the transfer was originally created because not all property owners pay property taxes, but all use county infrastructure. So it was designed to cover to capture revenue from those who don't pay property taxes that use our infrastructure, such as schools, churches, and so on. They have no property tax bill, but they do pay a water bill. So it does allow us to capture some revenue and then put it back into the county's operations. So that was the the thought of why it was originally created.
Okay.
And it is very common practice that we that utilities are taken use that surcharge to utilities collect to transfer it over to support that operations component. Now, I know it has been desired of the board, and Judy showed the history here. We have stepped it down to six, and we're trying to continue that process as we move forward. But obviously, that's a board decision each with each budget adoption. But that was the original thought process of why it was implemented. And at the time it was implemented, the county actually reduced its general fund millage rate to offset that. So the homeowners received reduction in their millage rate, or property owners received a reduction in their millage rate to account for the revenue that was going to be coming from the water fund. And then, again, the idea was to capture some revenue from those who don't pay property taxes but do use county infrastructure.
I had Bill share that, and I'm glad you ended on that point, because as I talk with him about the transfer and reducing the percentage, and the conversation began to be, well, how are you going to offset it? Are we going to offset it through the millage? Because that's what it did. It offset the millage. And I just want us to be mindful of all the things that were shared during the budget discussion. And part of this discussion is that all of these conversations and points made impact each other. So, you know, a reduction of 1% in the transfer is about two and a half million dollars. We're going to learn soon what our digest is going to bring into the county. We already have an outstanding $27 million. Well, maybe 26, based on the Tyler Technologies line item. $26 million potentially obligated already before we discuss anything new. We're just talking about continuation of current programs. And so this is just something to be mindful of. If we are serious about reducing that transfer, would we look at a commensurate reduction in services, or would we look at an increase in our millage?
And Chairwoman, I just want to add, I think that's a very valid point, and that's how we're able to step it down over a period of time, is you're taking two and a half million dollar bite out of that each year versus taking it from a full 10 to zero, or in this case, six to zero. So you can allow yourself to use some of that as a priority to fund through digest growth or other revenue growth to offset that in little increments, which is how you've been able to step it down over that period of time. So the board has been very proactive, and we, I know Commissioner Burrell will remember when we got it to six last time, and then we went back to 10. So it is something to be very mindful of, is when we set the budget each year, is if that's the priority, we continue to step it down over a period of time, or whichever whatever the priority of the board is.
Yeah. And the year that we put it to six was the year that we decreased the millage rate, and we had to take into considerations and other lingering impacts of that. So I just, I appreciate you sharing that history, but also the policy basis around why that transfer occurs. It's because we do have use of our services and wear and tear on our infrastructure from those that are not paying property taxes, which is the majority of the funding source for us funding our government services. Commissioner Burrell?
Um, yes, there is a history here. And I know this has been done since 1998. And the maximum it can go to is 10%. And when this first started, as far as a plan to reduce it and eventually eliminate it, it was around 21 million that was being transferred out when it's when we started the reduction. We knew we couldn't pull the plug on 21 million overnight, and out of the general fund, we would have had to close virtually everything. And I get that, and that's why we we, as a board, agreed at the time to try to reduce it incrementally. But in 2016, when we did roll back the millage to match the increase in the digest, the next year, 17, it jumped back up to 10% to make up for that shortfall. And so we had to start all over in 2018 or 19 to start reducing it. And now it's down to six, which is equivalent, 6%, which is equivalent to about 15 million. My question, Judy, is where the request is to make stormwater a separate fund or fee from water and sewer so that we can designate, how do we know only 500,000 is coming from stormwater, but regardless of where it's coming going to water and sewer or stormwater altogether, if it's one fund now? To me, if it's generated in water, and it's needed in water, as you see from your numbers here, it needs to stay in water and and cover those costs instead of 15 million going out when we need it. We need 19 million in in water. I know it's legal, and it's been done since 98, and other jurisdictions do it. But to me, it's not right.
So the 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 half, half a million dollars or less that the revenue that's being transferred being from stormwater, that comes from, my estimate, if we're bringing in six to eight million dollars a year in stormwater, and then the 6% of that number of the transfer.
But if it's, well, it's all one fund, water fund, separate from the general fund. Your fee, your water rates are separate from the wa, the general fund.
That's correct.
But this is a, this proposal is asking to break it down even further, to have designated stormwater fees and water and sewer separate, and who pays what, cities aren't included or are, you know, unincorporated Cobb. I'm just saying, the total amount that the water revenue is, 6% of that revenue is is going to the general fund.
Currently, yes.
Whether it's char, I mean, it's charged as one right now.
Yes, currently, because it's all one fund, it's 6% of our water and sewer revenue, yes.
Would you have more comments, Commissioner Gamble?
Okay, Bill, you you.
I was wondering, like, am I?
Oh, yeah. This conversation, so these non-taxpayers, i.e. the schools, churches, and stuff, do they pay into the fire fund?
They do not. So they don't pay property taxes.
Okay. So we don't transfer anything out of the fire fund to cover the expenses?
We don't transfer anything out of the water fund to cover fire.
Right. But I guess I'm surprised that these institutions don't pay into the fire fund, because, again, they require to use those services.
No, there's not a mechanism for that. That's why this is a unique practice as far as this was, I think that was the original thought process behind that, is, to your point, you're correct. They don't pay property taxes. So that means they don't pay into the general fund or the fire fund. This was a way to capture some of the costs, not all of the costs, of the general fund operation. There is not a mechanism that exists to allow to capture that for fire. General fund is the only place where we can transfer the utility fee from the water utility to the general fund. We cannot transfer it to the fire fund.
Just to kind of follow up, but we also can't transfer funds from the general fund into the fire fund either, right? I mean, we're not allowed to do that.
It is very rare. I'm not going to say we've never done that. I think it's been, I'm trying to think if there was ever a time where we had to supplement a project. That would be where I think it would come into play, is if you ever had to supplement a project, not for the operations or personnel.
Right. And we've supplemented SPOS projects, capital, that type of stuff. But I'm just, I'm kind of, this conversation.
And I will say this, I do want to be clear. When the state changed the way that we collect the birthday tax, the title of alarm tax, there was a period of time in which fire received a portion of that under the old law. And now it all goes into the general fund. So there was a period of transition where we did transfer some of that back to fire to try to make them whole for a period of time, or soften that blow, soften that landing. We worked with ACCG and had conversations about how that was being done and that we needed to discontinue that going forward because that law changed, and fire fund is not entitled, should not be entitled to those funds. So we did do it for a period of time, working with ACCG, but that was during that transition period where they changed the law on the title of alarm slash birthday tax, because fire did get that a part of their property tax component, but they no longer are entitled to that. So, yes.
And we did transfer the debt service millage to the fire fund.
Yes, that's okay.
A few years ago.
Yes.
When the parks bond was paid off.
Yes, Commissioner, to your point, the board has the ability to adjust any of the funds that we're legally allowed to collect a millage rate for. And to your point, we did transfer the debt service millage to the fire fund. So it wasn't, it was a rev, well, it was, the millage rate in total stayed the same, but we did zero out the debt service fund as that was no longer legally collected, and we had paid it off, and we just simply moved it to the fire fund to make them whole.
Right. But we can't take money out of the fire fund to the general fund.
That is correct. We cannot transfer any money out of the fire fund to the general fund. The only thing we can use the fire fund money for is fire-related projects. Now, we can move it to other funds as long as it's for a fire-related project, like SPOS or some of their capital maintenance, but it cannot go to, like, supplemental. SPOS or some of their capital maintenance, but it cannot go to, like, supplement a different activity.
And I mean, these are legislative options. So even the water transfer, that wasn't necessarily available just at the, at the existence of water fees being, water rates existing. It came as a result of someone advocating for the ability to transfer funds. So I would say that's probably where, that's where we're going to see the inconsistency with our other services, is that no one's drafted a bill to allow for those transfers. Your, your fund would have been fully protected otherwise.
To tag off of your question, though, is there a legislative law that says we can't tax, like, schools and the churches for the fire fund?
I do not, I will talk to the Tax Commissioner and Tax Assessor, but I do not believe that we are allowed to. They do not pay property taxes, based on their status.
Right, but the property tax is one line, and the fire fund is another line on the bill. So, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So again, if, is there something legislatively that says we can't charge them for the fire fund?
I believe so, but I will defer to Carla and her team to confirm that for you.
Probably because it's from property tax.
Because millage driven, and millage is based on property value, which is a property tax.
They don't pay property taxes, period. But we'll, I will see if we can get the, the code section that prohibits them, or that gives them the ability to not pay property taxes, I guess.
One, one follow-up question, and only because I, I'm purely ignorant on what happens with the fees. So I know there was a fee schedule that was passed as well with the fire department for
Yes.
Things that people may call in to have done.
Inspections.
Where does that money land? Is that land as a part of the fire fund bucket? Or does it land in another?
It does. So when we talked about the fire fund earlier, about 95% of its property taxes, they do have inspection fees and a few others, but it's very limited. But yes, anything that fire does to generate a fee lands in the fire fund and is under the same restrictions.
Okay. Because I was going to say, maybe there's a fee component to it, since the water, but water usage is a fee, but probably, I guess not.
So now that we're on the fire, so the, the, Bill, I'm sorry, my.
You're fine.
So, the safety village.
Yes.
The schools use the safety village. Do the schools pay to fund the safety village?
I do not believe so, but I will confirm with, we can check with fire. Fire pays for a portion of the safety village, but I, I will, I can confirm with fire.
There's also a requirement for fire departments to provide the education to elementary school children. It's part of their call and duties under the Georgia Code. And instead of going out to each school, doing it.
And there's a foundation.
There is a foundation.
That raises money.
It's still, the safety village is still funded within the general fund, but actually it's in the fire fund now because we transferred it to the fire fund a couple of years ago. So that became an expense under the fire fund.
Yes, I think the staffing and operations of it, but then to Commissioner Burrell's point, the, the foundation is for the upkeep and maintenance and then the.
Bill, you need to come closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. The, the foundation, I believe, is for the village itself and the upkeep and maintenance. But yes, to your point, Commissioner, the positions that are related to the safety village, I believe, are housed within the fire fund.
Commissioner Sheffield? Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the transfer, because obviously we received a lot of emails on that, and that question came up at the town hall. But in a scenario where the 15 million is not transferred, what does that mean for the services that the 15 million covers once it's transferred into the general fund?
So that, that would bring us to the, it's a policy decision at the end of the day.
I understand.
It'd be part of the budget adoption process. For example, when, when it was created, the millage rate was reduced and the revenue from the water fund was transferred into, as an offset. The board would have a decision to make if you took it from 15 million to zero. You have a $15 million delta that you have to make up. Now, you have the ability to generate additional revenues. The way we've been able to approach it, because we've done it incrementally, is allow for digest growth to offset that $2.5 million decrease each year. So that has been sustainable. If you go from 15 to zero, then that is a different conversation. Digest growth alone will not sustain that. Especially when we talk about the items that we've already approved thus far, the obligations we have for 25. And for example, 24 is already done as far as the transfer was happening, but I will say, in past, the board has had tough decisions to make. I know one of the first things that we've discussed in the past is the easiest thing to cut is capital, but we've all seen how hard we've worked to add the 12 million back. And we know 12 million is always significantly less than the request. The, the BOC contingency is a, you know, an item that was also discussed, is do you eliminate the 1 million? Those are like the easiest items that you can eliminate that don't have an immediate operational impact. Beyond that, then you begin impacting operations, so it becomes a difficult decision. When we did this during the '08, '09 recession, and we had those just tough discussions about services, we had a, you know, a lengthy retreat at the Threadmill. We had multiple board meetings where we discussed reduction of services, and that was not met well. But it, those are all the different levels. You only have so many levers. It's either reduce expenses or increase revenues to offset. Those are basically the two, and there's a variety of ways you can approach each one of those.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thanks. Obviously, this is our favorite slide. Just to add on to what Sheffield was asking, so let's imagine, and I think this is more for Judy, let's imagine we go down to 0% on the transfer. A budget that you would manage for that, and where those dollars would be at then, at that point allocated, you would, would it be in your, and maybe you can't answer this, but would it be in your professional opinion that we would still need a fee? Or would that, would you be able to say, hey, I can work with this extra amount of money in my budget to try to split between the commitments I have for water and the commitments I have for stormwater? I think that's one of the questions.
So my recommendation would be that there, there should still be a fee, because I feel like that out of that 15 million, at most, 500,000 should be used for stormwater, because I think we need to be careful that we have customers that we don't provide stormwater services to, and that we ensure that they are not paying for stormwater. So I would see that the, most of that's going to go back into water and sewer.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this slide before we move on? Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Okay, so this is back to the slide where we have our options. So after I presented the options in November, I know that we had quite a few citizens that were concerned about a $5 fee for the typical home. So what staff has come back as a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is, is $4 per typical home. So $4 per equivalent residential unit. That's the standard benchmark that, that utilities use.
Yes, Judy, we can go back to that slide. Yesterday, I met with some members of the business community, and I could tell you, their dominant interest was in option number nine, which had to do with stormwater pipe repairs in the right-of-way, which could have direct impact to their business. And then we talked about us not being reactive and being proactive. And it's funny, the one line that says proactive in it is the line, is a line that we're excluding from consideration, which could help us proactively address any imperfections or defects in our existing pipe, as opposed to responding, which is what we do if we added additional repairs, got additional crews, and did some of these other things. And so, these were written in a certain order for a certain reason. Are they written in priority order? Or is it possible that some of these other options can become priority? Because I see, let's say, additional funding for existing detention ponds is the same amount as the stormwater pipe repairs.
So these were, these are the water system, that we put these priorities in, in this order, based on where we have a backlog of work orders, and where we see our current work is not being done.
Okay.
And then some of the places where we're getting pressure from the public to assist them.
So this allows us to get caught up, at least, with?
The, the majority of this. Option three is to provide additional services that we're not providing today. But an option four is to provide, you know, expanded service that we're already providing today that would help, help customers. And then the majority of the rest of them are, are for us to get caught up with what we're supposed to be maintaining today.
Yeah, I know the goal is to be mindful. We're trying to limit the financial impact to homeowners. In an ideal world, we want to see a resultant decrease in what they're paying for water with any increase in the fee. But this allows us at least to begin to address the stormwater issues that continue to be brought to our attention when it rains.
Chairwoman Cupid, we did discuss this morning, Judy and I, that very line. And one of the things that Judy said is if we can just get caught up, then perhaps we can come back to the board and then perhaps allocate some of that funding for line option number nine.
I receive that.
So we're very much in tune to how this may impact our business community.
Okay.
And want to be able to say, yes, this will be something that will directly impact you. However, we do have one funding source, which is primarily in SPOS, but as Judy alluded to, Drew is having challenges as well with that. So I do think that this is a first step toward trying to get to the right thing. But at the end of the day, if there ever is a point where we can get caught up, I do think that there is certainly a willingness in the water system to, to look at how we can address option number nine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate, because, you know, eight and nine were what I were really, I was looking at from the proactive standpoint, just unfortunately, they wind up being also the, the more expensive services. But it's, hopefully, like you said, we catch up and then we can reprioritize. Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Well, and then one of my questions is, is the, the option three, since we were just discussing that, to fund the open channel maintenance immediately. In there, it says DOT does most of that. So are we going to be transferring money that's collected from the stormwater fee if our DOT does the work? Because again, taxpayers are paying for the DOT crew within the general fund. But if we're collecting it as a stormwater fee, but they're doing the work, how does that money cover?
So option three is for something we're not providing today. So this is an open channel on a private residential property. So DOT does not do anything in open channels on private properties, nor does the water system currently. But when we compare to our services with other utilities, there are some other utilities that have what they have defined as the public influence zone. So it's, when you have a public pipe that discharges, it impacts that open channel. Typically, you define it as six pipe diameters. So six pipe diameters downstream, you acknowledge that by piping that flow, that when it comes out, there is some, some impact to that open channel. So they will maintain that section of the open channel on a private residential property. So that's not, that's, that would be actually a new service.
Right, and even though it's going to be a new service, the general fund has to pay those DOT employees to go out there and do that work?
The, the proposal is that that would be water system employees or, or our contractors. We would fund it through the water system.
Okay, because I thought in the code, it said DOT would be doing a lot of that work.
Well, they're doing number nine right now, right?
Correct. Yes, DOT maintains everything in the right-of-way.
As they should. How are you going to go on private property?
Excuse me, put your mic on. She just, Commissioner, please put your mic on.
You can hear me.
I can, but we need the public that's listening, so when she responds, they understand what she's responding to.
So typically, there's a drainage easement there, but if we need to get a construction easement, we would need to get a construction easement from the property owner. But typically, if they're wanting us to come out and address something on their property, they're very willing to give us a construction easement to do that work.
Are there any other questions with respect to this slide? Okay.
So the rate structure that, that staff is proposing is a tiered rate structure for residential properties. So residential properties would be tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four, tier five. And I have highlighted tier two because that's what we have defined as our typical home, so our one equivalent residential unit. So our analysis so far shows that 53% of our current residential customers would fall into that tier two category, and that that fee would be $4 a month. So again, there's, there's five tiers for residential, and they would, depending on the amount of impervious surface on their property, where it falls in those ranges, that shows which, which fee that they would pay. There are some properties that would pay less, and there's some properties that would pay more. And then resident, non-residential properties, so your churches, your schools, your government buildings, you know, businesses, they all pay the non-residential rate. And then that rate is calculated. So they're, they pay $4 per equivalent residential unit, which we've defined as 3,700 square feet of impervious. And so you calculate their rate based on, based on that formula.
And just so that I'm clear, because I definitely get this question a lot, and I've, I've shared an answer, but what would be an example of 20,000, we're taking, for this example that's here, which is 20,000 square feet, we're saying a parcel that has 20,000 square feet of impervious surface, not a 20,000 square foot parcel?
Correct.
Right. So an example of a 20,000 square foot impervious would be, do we have any ideas of things that?
I, so I have some, I have had in my previous presentations, and I think I have some later on that show, like, a drugstore, let me see if it's, if I kept it in here. So, yes, so later on, I have some examples that'll kind of give that. So like.
Excellent.
I'll say Chick-fil-A might be about 34,000 square feet.
Okay.
A drugstore might be about 60,000 square feet.
Perfect. Thank you. That is exactly what I'm looking for.
So there are two different standards as far as, as, as charging a fee. So I just wanted to share that we did look at an alternative. And an alternative is to charge all residential properties one flat rate, not have the tiered rate. And if we did that, we would have to charge all residential properties $4.22. So 68% of our customers who are proposed to pay $4 or less would actually have to pay $4.22. In addition, that would increase the cost to all of the commercial properties. So when we looked at doing this fee, we talked about the way we charge now, properties are not paying their proportionate share of their impact to the system. And so staff felt like using the tiered residential rate structure was, did a better job of the proportionate allocation than just doing one flat residential rate, which really pushes customers with less impervious to pay more, and it also pushes a lot more of the burden onto the commercial property. So that's why we proposed the tiered residential rate. If, if we had done this flat rate structure, I think that some of the questions that we've gotten and concerns about our definition of impervious and, you know, but I live on a one-acre lot, a lot of those would go away because it wouldn't matter, you all pay this one rate. So trying to break that tier up has, has raised some questions that we otherwise wouldn't have to address, but we really felt like that was a more proportionate way to, to charge the fee. All right, so code amendments. I'll go through the code amendments. So I gave an overview back in November, and then I went through them in detail on March 12th, so I'm not going to go through them in detail, but I'll just cover some of the changes since March 12th, and also respond to some of the concerns that we've heard. So, Chapter 50, the only change to that one is we added an effective date of August the 1st. And on this one, I just want to clarify, there's, there's three sections in this that are being deleted. And the intent of the content of those three sections are really being moved to Chapter 122. So the, the last bullet here, the maintenance of stormwater facilities, commercial industrial. The current code provides the legal path for the county to act if a property owner refuses to fix private infrastructure that is failing and impacting other properties. It allows the county to fix the property if we take them to court, and it's been determined by the courts that it is a public nuisance. Once it goes to court, they still don't fix it, the county can step in. And this current code allows the county to file a lien on the property to ensure that the owner reimburses the county for the costs. This does not mean that the county. This does not mean that the county takes the property. It just ensures that if the property is sold, that we would get reimbursed. And this is the same language that is already in the nuisance code. So this is not new language. This is not language that's really any different from a lot of our code language. And so we're taking this language and moving it to 122. All right, let's see. Chapter 110, there's no changes on this. All right, 122, so in 122, we modified the definition of impervious surfaces. So we added that pervious pavers, pervious pavement and green roofs are considered 60% impervious. And we have gotten a lot of questions about our definition of impervious and is it consistent with the zoning definition of impervious? And so the definition we're using here follows the definition in the Chattahoochee River Corridor Plan. And that is a state requirement of how the water system, when dealing with stormwater issues, how we have to handle, and even community development handles this sometimes too. Properties within a specific corridor along the Chattahoochee River have certain limitations of things that they can do. So that's the definition by that corridor in the Atlanta Regional Commission. And the definition that we have is consistent with the definition in Chapter 50. It's more specific. It gives more detail and provides more examples, but it's consistent with Chapter 50. And Chapter 50 is what controls what the water system has to do with respect to stormwater. So Chapter 50 has the ordinances that we're required to have in our code from the state for our stormwater permit with the state. So it's Chapter 50 that really, really governs our services. And so that's why we're making that definition more consistent with Chapter 50.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Actually, it's on the previous slide for 110. I know when we were looking at this last time for removing the dedication of detention ponds, there was some discussion up here about not removing that ability for it to be accepted by the county. And just curious, I guess, if there has been any follow-up on that and certainly from the other members on the board for not removing that.
I'm sorry, removing what?
The dedication of detention ponds. I'm making sure I'm talking about the same thing, though. Yeah, okay, where we're accepting detention ponds.
Right. So Chapter 110 is, currently developers have the option when they build a subdivision to dedicate the pond to the county or to the HOK. And so the modifications in Chapter 110 would not allow, would stop the practice of the ability to dedicate it to the county. They would be required to dedicate it to the HOA going forward.
Right. And what I'm saying is, especially knowing that we're trying to move into providing services around stormwater and that the future goal would be that we look at it more as a system and not as a piecemeal, that we would not remove the option. I know you said like 33% of the development right now tend to want to dedicate it to the county or have the county take it on. But I was just curious because when we were discussing it as a board, there was also interest in also not removing our ability to accept detention ponds.
I think we can do it. We have to pay for it. And it's a very costly undertaking, which is why they're limiting it. So we talked about limiting it to the $4. Maybe that's something we consider if we get caught up to see how we can cover that. But I see that being, you know, from the conversations we've had with the director, I think that would be a significant cost, which is why other localities are not providing that service.
I know when we asked last time, we had asked, would the fee be able to stay at $3.97? And I think you shared for the duration of like maybe the next several years or so. And then there would need to be an increase to scale up. And the hope is that by then, we've figured out some other things related to stormwater. But.
Again, I don't remember us saying we have to scale up, but I do like where the conversation was going that if we can get caught up, maybe some of the things we're funding today don't have to be funded and we can then use those resources for this. But I'm not saying we can't do it, Commissioner. I'm just saying that I know that was provided to be a significant concern or cost. I think I've heard from the director a conversation regarding another way to address that. But I'm not aware of us having the conversation of it being in the fee.
It's already, it's in there. It's currently in the proposed list of.
Excuse me, for us expanding it in the existing fee here.
The question that I'm asking is, do we want to remove the option? And I'd share, I had asked the question last time about keeping the fee that would still be able to be $3.97 if we struck this change.
Oh, you want to remove it?
Yeah, I'm saying I want us to allow continuing accepting the detention ponds for these.
I don't see how, I don't see how it makes this even affordable for us to do it. But I'm not saying we don't consider it. I just don't think that list of options would stop at $3.97, I think. I think, you can address me if I'm wrong, Director, but I just don't perceive how we do it within what's currently listed.
So it would depend on how many more get dedicated to us. So over time, we may need to raise that fee. We just have to see what, you know, revenues are coming in. So I'll just.
Okay.
I know there's some commissioners have some questions.
I do, but I want you to finish, I want you to flesh out what you just said.
Okay.
So we may have to augment the fee if we continue to get more stormwater detention ponds dedicated to the county. So if we go back to that list of line items.
Option six.
Option six, which we now have at $0.02 per month, that is based on existing detention ponds. So that one line item could increase as we continue to get more. And I thought I heard you say as part of this, we would no longer accept.
So if.
Residential detention.
This $2 million is to fund, to take care of what we own today. So if we continue to accept, we'd have to see, it kind of depends on how much development there is and then how much additional revenue we're coming in from additional properties. It could be that we could maintain some additional ones with the $2 million. But it could be that depending on the rate of the ones that are dedicated, we may have to raise the fee at some time.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Judy, when you and I talked about the detention pond, we had discussions around the HOA, excuse me, maintaining the detention pond, but that the county would still handle the infrastructure? Can you talk a little bit about that?
So sure, and I'll expand even more. I mean, there's pros and cons to the county owning detention, accepting detention ponds. It is difficult for HOAs to maintain the detention ponds, particularly if there's a structural failure, because they just typically don't have the expertise and the contacts with contractors to know who to hire and engineers and that kind of thing. So there is some benefit for having the county. But there's also downsides for the county to owning these. And that's because it's very inefficient for the county to go out and mow hundreds of ponds throughout the county. It's really more efficient for that local HOA to mow the ponds in their subdivision rather than us having to contract and get that out or us having to hire crews and have crews grow out through the county. So one thing that we had discussed was potentially making it so that the HOA had to mow the pond, but then the county would maintain the structures. And one concern that was expressed about that was, but what if they don't mow the pond? And then they just wait for the pond structure to fail and then they want us to come in and fix it. So it was kind of like, what's their incentive to make sure they're maintaining it if they aren't responsible for the structure? So it's very complicated, this, you know, this issue.
Commissioner?
Just the only other piece to add to that, too, is for someone that is in an HOA, especially the smaller ones, like it, over time, when it's a new development, it's like, oh yeah, that makes sense. It's all the things. 20 years later, so many people have gone through that subdivision. And then there's also the question of they're paying, they're paying the fee and maintaining that system while we know that the credit manual was meant to help offset some of that. It's, that's part of some of the issue as well. It's how are we, you know, being expected to have the expertise of the county for something that's going to impact more than us? And we're maintaining this piece, but we're also paying for this service from the county.
And that is a complaint that we are getting from current HOAs.
Yes.
Of why are we paying to maintain our pond and we're paying you to maintain somebody else's? And so I've gotten the impression that they don't think that that's fair. And so, like, should we keep, because we're going to keep adding to that and keep adding to their cost to maintaining other detention ponds if we keep accepting other detention ponds.
Right.
I think we need to really look at that. Because even with something that was stated, we have people who've dedicated their ponds to the county and then we have new development. But what about those, like you're talking about, that are in the middle? That could use some assistance, but may not have that option in front of them. I just, I would like to see us flesh that out. Perhaps at some later time. I like the idea of you bringing up this credit manual, that if there are people who are maintaining it, perhaps that's a credit for their stormwater.
Yeah, so that is, we'll get into the credit manual, but that is what is in the draft credit manual now for subdivisions that the developer had the option to donate and made that option. If those subdivisions maintain their ponds, because there was the option there, that there is, that is part of the credit manual.
Okay, great. We're just not there yet.
Right. I'm just, I'm also looking at, you know, not necessarily today, but maybe 10 years from now, where we eventually want to go. And if we are serious about stormwater conveyance, it is not a parcel-by-parcel analysis. It just won't be. It is a systemic analysis. It is a regional analysis. It is a, state is behind the curve. We're behind Florida when it comes to our interpretation of stormwater. And so I'm more so saying, how can we prepare ourselves for that future? Which is why I'm reticent to strike this at this point, especially since it's not being abused today, I would say, if it's being used as a 33%. But I do, obviously, I understand the cost constraint, but that was why I was asking, like, at the increase that we're seeing, at the rate of acceptance that we're seeing, could we still stay within that number while we're still working through some of these other more legislative hurdles related to stormwater management? But.
I understand. Commissioner Gamble?
And I guess where I'm really struggling with this whole conversation is, you know, we're talking about maintaining detention ponds, but we're not talking about the stormwater issues that we cause for private property owners that don't have stormwater easements that are impacted because of development. You know, my backyard, I don't have a stormwater easement, but my backyard turns into a river every time it rains. The water department, and again, no offense to Judy and her team, approved an 18-inch storm drain to discharge onto private property without looking at the fact that the pipe is now discharging water into the back of a house with no easement. So this whole regional detention stormwater is a great concept. But when we continue today to approve stormwater discharge in areas that do not have an easement and continually cause issues for private property owners to have to address, I can't support any of this. And then to sit here and talk about taking on detention ponds when we're not helping those private property owners that have been burdened because of development upstream, where's their assistance? There is none. And then let's talk about the commercial property owners that have been required to over detain by 110%. The additional costs that they have had to endure just to put in the stormwater controls to help maintain or control stormwater that comes off of their property. Again, we haven't seen a stormwater credit manual. We don't know if they're going to get credit. Yet they are going to have to contribute more to this fee, but they've already gone above and beyond. So, and while we also have the state law, the Supreme Court said that we could charge this fee. My question is, is when they determine that, our code specifically states how much impervious surface you can have. Was that a consideration that the Supreme Court used when they made that decision?
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Definitely brought up a lot of points there, but again, none of these things are solutions in and of themselves. It's going to take a whole list of things and you can't stop one part of the solution from moving forward because they're not all happening at the same time. It has to, like, they're not all completed at the same time. It is a complex issue. Honestly, I'm not seeing other jurisdictions talk about it to this extent with this combination of different solutions. But I think it's absolutely important. This is one piece. The protected fee is one component to a whole host of things that have to happen. And you're right, a lot of it has to do with older development. A lot of it has to do with creating, making sure those standards continue on. A lot of it has to do with how, not doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis. Because that's still where we are when it comes to zoning analysis. It's still parcel-by-parcel. So until we graduate to the point where we're truly looking at it as a network, a true network, and that it is a public system, we're going to have those issues. But it's going to take some very intentional steps in the meantime for us to solve it.
And so where are code amendments to start addressing that as well? Because this, you know, this is an easy fix of not approving a storm drain to discharge into the back of someone's house without an easement. To me, that's just common sense right there. You don't approve that without an easement. But the county does all the time. So where is our policy changes to start addressing that? Before we start charging the taxpayers to fix a problem that we keep perpetuating.
None of this is a zero-sum game. None of this is an either-or. Anything that we can do to address stormwater helps us be a step further than where we are today. Saying we're not going to do it because we don't see everything means that we're comfortable with the way things are today, which means that when it rains and rain events become more acute and we continue to have people complain, we're just going to accept those complaints because we're going to do nothing different today than what we did yesterday. I agree with Commissioner Richardson. We've got to continue to move forward. But I also believe the parcel-by-parcel analysis is part of addressing a network. Regional detention is part, it all adds up. There's no stormwater utility system out there that doesn't address things on a parcel-by-parcel basis. But you also see there are state laws that do facilitate what we're doing here at the local level. We have the city of Austell, which is, continues to be a subject of flooding. They have three basins that come in from other counties that all contribute to the flooding of that community. That doesn't mean they throw up their hands and do nothing and continue to blame those other parts of the metro Atlanta region because of how they're naturally configured. We all do our part so that we can relieve the burden on communities. We not only have just general hydrology issues to be concerned about, we have aging infrastructure. Aging infrastructure that we address whenever we have SPOSS and that we will have to continue to address. Not continuing to add funding to that only adds to the burden on all of our property owners that we will all have to pay for. I was just doing research in preparation for today. There are several examples of localities that did not address their stormwater infrastructure and now the bill before them is huge. I'm talking billions of dollars that they have to pay for because they did not take the steps to address it when they could have perhaps in the millions or hundreds of thousands. You know, you're right, Commissioner Gamble, I think that what you're talking about should not have happened to you and that that could be a fix. Let's address that. But let's address that and also address these other things so that we can get to what's becoming an increasing burden for all of us every time that it rains.
Right. I mean, a problem is not going to fix itself. Like, this is not going to fix itself. There has been missed opportunities in the past to address this, but for whatever reason, it has not been addressed. It's horrible what happened to Commissioner Gamble in her backyard, but this gives us an opportunity to ensure that it doesn't happen to future residents. Do we need to review the policy? Absolutely. This is not just a Cobb County fix. There's water coming in from different counties. I am encouraged to see a line item for funding for future regional projects. I know that there's been conversations around with the Atlanta Regional Commission and our neighboring counties. But, you know, this is not a problem that's going to fix itself. And we're really behind the eight ball, unfortunately, in dealing with this. And, you know, it's just going to require us making tough decisions, understanding it's not something that's going to get fixed overnight. that's going to get fixed overnight. But I do know that you and your team and the board, even though we may have difference of opinions with some things, I think we all want the same thing and that's the best for the residents of Cobb County. So, you know, I am supportive of this. We just have to make difficult decisions at times. They're not easy, but there just gets to a point where difficult decisions have to be made, but not doing anything will only exasperate the issue and it will be exponentially worse. There was a comment shared about neighboring jurisdictions. I know that DeKalb County, and you probably know this better than me, they pushed this off and pushed it off and now, you know, it's cost them quite a bit to now go back and correct. So I appreciate the time that you put in and the town halls that you've attended and responding to emails and meeting with, with, with the commissioners and the county managers and the business community and several others. But I am encouraged that we do have something in front of us to consider to ensure that things are not worse. There was a young lady at, at my town hall, if you recall, she had a $10,000 repair in her backyard. And as I listened to her story, my thought was, would she have had to have that done if this issue was addressed 10, 15 years ago? Possibly not. So, you know, for her who's paying $10,000 and she was very upset and I completely understand it because I would have been upset too, but then again, I'm like, well, had we addressed this, would she have had to pay that $10,000? So as we move forward, I'm looking at the resident who may save $10,000 from making a costly repair to their property. That's it.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things before I move to the next slide. I just want to be clear for, for people who are listening. When I say a regional project, I'm not talking about a project that would include like neighboring counties or the city of Atlanta. I'm talking about a project in Cobb County that just covers Cobb County, but a project that like the Noonday, Chestnut Meadows Regional Detention Pond that covers a large area of Cobb County. So, I know that there's other regional discussions going, so I just wanted to clarify that. But we are having discussions with other groups within the region to talk about what kind of regional projects can you do, what kind of projects can you do to make a difference on flooding? So, we want to look at that. We want to work with others. And then, you know, we have a lot to do for stormwater, but no community is going to be able to handle, no stormwater infrastructure system is going to be able to handle a 500-year storm. They're just not designed to handle a 500-year storm. So no matter what we do, there's going to be extreme rain events that are still going to cause issues because we would have to just build the pipes too big. We'd have to take down people's houses to put in giant pipes to handle a 500-year storm. So, just want to be clear about that. And, you know, I agree that the water system, we are certainly open to looking at improving our code. Our code exceeds the state requirements, our ordinances, but we are certainly looking, be happy to look to improve those and to improve our practices on plan review. But one of our challenges, I think you know, is staffing. I know y'all get emails all the time about a developer who's waiting on stormwater for their plan review. We don't have enough staffing to handle the plan review and even the zoning that's coming through. So, part of what we're asking for is staffing to help with, engineers to help with some of that is, is part of what's in this proposal.
Thank you. We are now at slide 17. I think we've got about 35 slides.
Some of these, we'll go through faster as we go through. All right, so other things in this definition, we added a definition for homeowners association and stormwater division manager. All right, 302 and 303 did not change. Scope of responsibilities has not changed. I just want to clarify on this one, that we are not reducing the scope of responsibilities as with respect to 122. So the pipes that we maintain today on residential property are pipes that we would still maintain if this code is approved. So out of all of the code changes, the only service we're looking at reducing is to not take any additional detention pond. So I think there's been some confusion about we're going to stop maintaining pipes on residential property and I just want to be clear that, that we're not going to do that. All right, so, let's see, we did make some changes to 305, which is the nuisance. So Superior Court was changed to magistrate court throughout. It got changed in one spot in the original version and we got that all added in. Added a cross-reference to the nuisance abatement law. And then we added language to just require that if, if there is HOA property that is cited for a nuisance for a stormwater infrastructure issue, that the water system would send a copy of that notice to all properties within that subdivision to make sure that all properties that are impacted by what could potentially happen with that are aware of that. So that was added in there. And then, this is where we did move the language about the legal process to go through to require a private property owner to repair their infrastructure. And it does allow the water system to put a lien on the property if we end up having to step in. And I'll just say that, you know, the code provides the law for what we do, but it does not provide all the details of all of our practices and policies. So the water system already has a practice where that septic tank subdivisions that have filed a petition for us to extend sewer, when they connect to sewer, we will help them with those costs. We'll, we'll give them a loan for their connection fees so that they don't have to pay all their connection fees upfront. But to ensure that loan, we file a lien agreement, a lien against the property and the homeowner signs off on it. And that's to protect that they work out with us and then two years they sell the property and then they owed us money that they didn't pay us. So I would envision if we had to go in and repair a private stormwater infrastructure, that we would work with the property owner for the costs that would be due back to the water system to work out a payment plan, you know, over several years. But to protect that payment plan, we would, we would file a lien against the property just to ensure that if they sold the property, we would get the money back. And then, I mentioned that, you know, this same language allowing liens is already in the chapter that's on nuisances, but we have several other code sections that allow the county to file a lien. And just one example is in the subdivision chapter for private street repairs, if the county has to go in and repair a private street, it provides that a lien could be filed to take care of that. And then also, there's in the fire prevention and protection chapter, chapter 54, that has to do with alarm systems. I think if they keep incurring costs, the fire department on alarm systems, responding to alarm systems, if they can file a lien. So that's just a couple of them, but there are a lot of places through the county. If you go to our code and type in lien, you'll find several references to the county having the ability to put a lien on a property. All right, so chapter 122, 306, the establishment of enterprise fund. So there was language that was added just stating that the enterprise fund is subject to the terms of any governing water or sewer system revenue bond resolution. And then we also revised the bond language to clarify that stormwater revenue cannot be used to pay off a general fund bond. So it can only be used to pay off water, stormwater bonds and that, that would, that payment would have to be consistent with whatever bond resolution we have in place at the time. All right, so 313.
Excuse me, Ms. Judy, we have a question here.
And, and Judy, the, the second one is where I know there's still a lot of concerns because it says revise bond language and that says issued for county water or stormwater system. Shouldn't, shouldn't these enterprise funds only go to stormwater since that's what those enterprise funds are specifically being collected for?
So, we ran, we had our bond council and Bill might have to, if he's still here, might have to speak more to this on me, but we had our bond council, look at this. And there is some confusion about the way our existing revenue bond is written on whether or not stormwater revenue would have to be eligible to be paid off our current water system bond resolution. So, we, we would really have to follow the council of, of our bond council on whether or not stormwater revenue could use to be paid off current bonds. Because we do have current bonds because we're collecting stormwater revenue currently underwater and sewer. We have had some previous water system bonds that we listed stormwater projects being eligible for those bonds.
But I guess where the concern goes back, and this goes back to the conversation we had about an hour ago, is transferring stormwater money, or I'm sorry, water funds into the general fund. And so when you say county water, to me, the county water fund should be paying off the county water bonds. And if we take out any bonds for stormwater, those should be specifically for stormwater from the fees established. So I know there's still a lot of concerns that essentially these fees that are supposed to be just specifically for stormwater can now go to pay for just regular water fees even though we're still transferring money into the general fund.
Right. So, the issue is, is that we have current bonds that we're paying off. And I know it's specifically, I can't remember which year, one, that when we went out to the bond market on there and we listed the projects that could be funded, listed stormwater projects. We're still paying that off. So we're changing the way that we're charging for stormwater. We still have to pay off that bond that had stormwater projects listed in it.
And how much is left on that bond or when does, when does that final bond payment being made?
I, I don't know. I can find that out and provide that to you.
I see Bill looking that up, so we can provide that during the presentation. That's a good question.
Again, that, we, we consulted with bond council on how to word this.
I understand. We can't go backwards, but in the past, if we commingled it together and the bonds were backed by what revenue source we had, which were those commingled funds, I mean, that's what allowed us to probably get the bond rating that we did have. But moving forward, hopefully with this new construct, we can separately allocate stormwater funding for stormwater projects.
That, that would, that would be the water system's intention for sure.
Yeah.
All right, so in 313, we just clarified the language regarding that.
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry, just a thought. Judy, maybe perhaps there can be some more refined language to talk about any existing bonds.
So, the language we put in there was the language that we were given from our bond council.
Okay. I guess just to provide some assurances for the public though, I mean, the basis for was with respect to a past bond, is there any way to tighten that language so we can talk about the payoff of existing bonds versus bonds moving forward, which could, which we're expecting to have a dedicated stormwater revenue source for any bonds for any future stormwater projects? I'm not trying to take away as much as just clarify.
I, all I can say is that that was discussed with the bond council and this was the language that we were, that we were advised to use from the bond council.
Yeah, Bill, I would just ask your help in getting that more clear because this is not the first time that has come up during our code amendment discussions about residents being concerned about the revenue going towards a broader bucket then.
Sure, we'll be happy to be part of that conversation, but I, but I believe what Judy said is it's the previous bonds that are already written that already have the language in there that's addressed this.
I hear what she's saying, but she's saying though, isn't necessarily reflected here, which makes people feel as if this is susceptible to be used for future bonds versus past bonds.
And, we'll be happy to look at the language again, but we've, we'll speak with Ms. Murray and talk to her about it, so.
We'd be grateful. Thank you.
All right, so 122, 313 was revised, just to clarify that, that, that one of the bullets kind of, kind of broad language about other properties that were under other stormwater permits not being subject to our fee. So we just made it very clear that what our, the intention is Dobbin's Air Reserve Base, all the properties that are covered under their stormwater permit with the state, those would not be subject to our fee because we have no jurisdiction over them. They are governed by the state separately. All right, 314, we clarified a section that had to do with billing properties that don't currently have a water bill, a water account with the water system. And it just clarifies that if a homeowners association property has impervious surface that serves the entire community, like a road, private road and parking slots, that we can take that and allocate it to all of the properties within that, that development. And again, that only applies to properties that don't have a current water bill with us. So if the property has a water meter, it's going to be charged to the water account. And then also, we added an adjustment section to this and we moved the process for customers to request an adjustment to their stormwater fee from the appeals section to this section. So, we also clarified, changed some language that if the property owner wants to request that their stormwater fee, the calculation, the impervious area be reviewed, that they can make that request. And the only reason they would have to provide a survey is if we could not determine based on a field verification or reviewing the aerial
Okay.
...that the adjustment needs to be made. So if we look at the aerial and it looks like to us that the, the aerial outline is right on top of the roof line, but somebody's saying, well, that's not the correct calculation, we have no other way to verify that than to ask that the property owner provide a survey. But I think that the most of the requests we would be able to do without requiring a survey.
Thanks for clarifying that caveat because there was a concern that residents would have to provide a costly survey just to appeal, but that's only in the instance that our GIS system is unable to make that determination.
Or field verification. Like if we.
Somebody actually can go out.
Right. So for if they want to say like, hey, that might look like impervious on the aerial, but it's not, and we can go out there and see that it's not, or, you know, we actually removed that two months ago and the aerial was taken before that concrete was removed, we could go out and verify it's no longer there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, the credits, the credits has not changed, but I know there's been a lot of question about the credits. And I want, I want to be clear, the credit manual is not part of what we are asking to be approved at the board meeting tonight. We have a draft credit manual, but we're waiting to find out if the stormwater utility fee was going to be approved before we spend resources to finish it. And that's not uncommon, that a fee be approved and then there's still some things that need to be do, be done to implement. Normally you don't get 100% through before you approve it because then you might have expended a lot of staff resources that you didn't need to extend, expend. But I'll just go through some of the things that are in the draft manual now. Again, this will not be part of the vote tonight, but a credit for retrofitting stormwater detention facility, credits for showing that septic tanks are being maintained. One is a partial credit for no direct discharge, so recognizing if somebody's property discharges directly to the Chattahoochee River, they're not utilizing a lot of our stormwater system. It's only a partial credit because they do get a lot of benefit of things that we do upstream of their property. And then a watershed improvement project provides if a property owner donates an easement or property for us to do some kind of improvement project, like a stream restoration project or a detention project, then they would get a credit, a reduction in fee. Watershed stewardship is if the public wants to volunteer or businesses want to have their staff go out and volunteer and do stream cleanups as part of our programs, then they could apply for credits for that. And then watershed education, if they attend some of our educational seminars to learn how to protect the watershed, they can earn credits for that. Then next is the MPDS industrial stormwater general permit compliance. So industries that have this specific permit with the state, the state requires us to monitor those businesses, those industries, even though their permits with the state, we still have, state, we still have to monitor them. So if they show us that they are in compliance, they would get a credit. And then hotspot best management practices implementation, those are businesses that have a high risk of impacting water quality, say like an oil change place, that if they don't take care of the oil and it discharges and gets in the stream, it would be a problem. So they don't have to have a permit with the state, but if they show us they've implemented certain best, best management practices, then they would be eligible for a fee. And then low impact parcel, this is some thing that we've seen in some other credit manuals with the properties that are two acres or more but have less than 10, 10% or less impervious, they would get a slight reduction in the fee. And then of course, if a property owner actually goes out and reduces the amount of impervious property on their area, impervious area on their property, they're going to get a reduction. If it's commercial property, they're definitely going to get a reduction because theirs is a straight calculation, right? because theirs is a straight calculation, right? So, their calculation would change. On a residential property, they would have to remove enough to change them to a different tier. So, only if they're kind of at the bottom end of a tier is it probably going to make a difference in their fee. But, the other piece of this is, in addition to reducing the area affecting the calculation, there's also a reduction in the fee for a short time to incentivize a property owner on top of that fee reduction to, to remove the impervious. And then the last one is the residential detention pond we were speaking about earlier is that, so for subdivisions where the developer chose to donate the pond to the HOA, that if they show us that they are maintaining the pond, then they would be able to apply for credits for the properties within that subdivision that they are saying are contributing to that, maintenance of that pond.
The development of the stormwater credit manual is important, I think it's a critical piece of education, and the more we see that our residents are mindful of how they can help reduce stormwater, it helps us all achieve the goal of reducing that impact. So, I really look forward to working with others, there was a meeting yesterday with members of the business community who want to help with that, and I think our education efforts with citizens could allow us to be partners in this effort of reducing everything that we all are contributing to stormwater.
And then the last, the last modification since the, the original publication is the appeals process. So, we did revise the language a little bit, so the appeals only applies to fee adjustments and credits, and it deletes the requirement to provide a survey, and the process for asking for an adjustment was moved to the adjustment section. And then it adds, if stormwater division looks at it and doesn't provide an adjustment or the property owner's not happy with their decision, then they can appeal to the director of the water system, and then if they're not happy with that decision, it provides that they can appeal to the Board of Commissioners after that, and then to Superior Court.
Yes. For the appeal to the Board of Commissioners, what does that process look like? Is that, do we know yet?
So, my understanding is that it would be, it's like a business license appeal, so it would be heard like at the end of a board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just, just a summary of the proposed changes in services. One of the proposed changes in services is stop accepting new detention ponds, another one is to start maintaining the public influence zone of open channel on residential property, next is providing a limited amount of riprap to residential properties with severe erosion issues, and then the last one is to move stormwater development inspections to water. And then again, I want to just be clear that the pipes that we are currently maintaining on private residential property, we will continue to maintain, that that's, that's not changed. And then, of course, there are other things that are, services we're already providing, but additional funding that we've been through. And then that's the tier. So, I just want to be clear, so what, there's a couple of things being brought to the board tonight, one is the approval of the code amendments, and then there's a separate agenda item to approve the rate structure, and then to be clear that there's also in the agenda item to adjust the water and sewer fees, so to eliminate the higher fee and just charge properties the lower fee, so that this reduction in water and sewer fees will help offset the cost for, for properties that are currently paying for stormwater through their water sewer fees.
Okay. Also, Director, I think there's consideration to move that effective date back to January--
So, so yes, I know that there has been, been some requests for the public to be able to see online their actual impervious area, and we are working on that. We're still doing some QAQC of properties that were under construction when the aerials were flown, because that aerial, that typically picks up more than what is the actual impervious. And so, we're still doing that QAQC work and working on matching up properties to water accounts, so that continues. And so, we probably won't have the online aerials available, we're looking at, last I talked to my staff, probably early June. So, I know there's been some, some thoughts of giving some time, some more time after, from June, provide some additional time where customers can go and look at that, and then if they don't think it's correct, submit to us a request to change it before the billing starts, so to push back the billing date. And then also to spend some additional time, give us more time to do more public education on this, more public outreach, and I've already talked to Ross, and his, he and his staff are certainly willing to help us with putting some educational videos together online, and happy to go out and meet with business communities and faith-based groups to explain what the purpose of this fee is, and then how it would impact their property. So, if we did push back the effective date, that would give us a little bit more time to do all of those things. And I think what has been mentioned is possibly pushing back the effective date to January 1st of 2025. So, the water system's certainly open to doing that if that's what the board would like. All right, and then this is quick, I've shown this in some of my other presentations, but to just be clear, that currently there's no line item for stormwater on a bill, but customers are paying for it, so it's not obvious to customers that they're paying for it. If we implement the fee, then there would be a stormwater line added, but there also would be a reduction in water and sewer fees to offset some of that cost, and this just shows a little bit, you know, for a house, typical house, 3,000 gallons to 5,000 gallons, their monthly increase might be like 280 to 186, depending on how much water they currently use. And then, this is what you had asked Commissioner a little bit about, just some ideas of what impervious surface is. So, a fast food restaurant, I picked a typical one, 34,000 square feet, and then churches, churches are pretty big, 300,000 square feet, a big box store, even, even more than that. So, it's not the entire property, it's just the impervious area on the property that's used to calculate the fee.
Okay, can you just go back to that slide?
Yes.
Yeah, so the time to, for education, I think, really needs to focus on those commercial property owners that are going to see the greatest increase, particularly for those in our faith-based community who will see those increases, I look forward to having those discussions. Okay, are there any other questions, Commissioners?
One quick question. Judy, you mentioned earlier that if we went with a flat rate, I think it was 422, I think was the number, that it would adversely impact the commercial business. How would, what would that look like for the commercial businesses if we had a flat fee?
Well, the, the flat fee would not apply to commercial businesses.
Right, I understand.
So, what it would mean is that right now, what we're proposing is a commercial business to pay $4 per 3,700 square feet of impervious. If we went to a flat residential fee, that would increase the cost to commercial properties to $4.22 per 3,700 square feet of impervious surface.
Okay. And what was that first figure, $4?
$4.
Just $4, all right, okay. Per 3,700 square feet?
So, that's, that's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your robust presentation, already answering questions that we've had. I just want to go back to summary of proposed changes in services, that the utility will allow us to maintain public influence zones on residential property downstream of public pipe. That pertains to the riprap particularly, or is that any other service being provided?
So, that, that's a little bit separate from the riprap?
Okay.
So, that's the part of where we currently don't maintain any open channels, but if, if that is approved, then we would maintain a short section of open channel on private residential properties, a short section downstream of a public pipe.
Oh, okay.
And then the riprap would be separate. The riprap is that if a property owner has severe erosion issues, and obviously, with the funding we're talking about, we couldn't provide every property that would probably call us the first year, and we're going to have to prioritize it, but a property owner that has severe erosion issues--
Yes.
--to help them with some of their costs, we could provide the stone, the riprap, have it delivered to the property, but they would have to either install it themselves or hire a contractor to install it, but at least the cost to materials would be reduced for them to address that erosion problem.
Okay, thank you. And again, talk to me about that distance from the right-of-way within--
So, it's the distance downstream of the pipe, and typically it's six-pipe diameters, because the bigger the pipe, the more, the further distance it's going to impact that open channel.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions for the Director? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you tonight. For those of you who are with us, we will be addressing this code and other matters tonight during our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 7:00 PM. Hope you can join us. Our meeting is now adjourned.